Welcome, everybody, and I want to thank our folks that are here from their candidates for the school board are here to talk with us today. We've got three candidates here today talking with us. I want to make sure I get last names correct, so I'm just gonna open up my paperwork. So we have Thomas Geller here, we have Meg Larson, and we have Michelle Parsons. Did I get everyone's names correct?
Yes.
Wonderful. I really appreciate you three coming and participating in this Zoom. We're pretty informal here. We do so typically I have coffee hours and coffee clashes, and I have different people come in and speak with our group. We have open conversation. It is very, we're really, we're really kind of a fun group, so I hope you enjoy this Zoom call and are able to feel like it was productive and helpful to get who you are out to our voters. I will be again, I'm gonna send this to our membership, so those folks that aren't here are gonna have a chance to kind of get to know. You put a name and a face and some like background together, so when they're at the voting booths next Tuesday, they'll be able to vote, you know, well, and I am a strong believer in a good educated voter is the best voter. Like I said to my group, we had on Monday for, we had folks that were running for the planning board and folks running for the budget committee. I am, I don't live in town. I actually live in Nashua. I work here, so I am very non-biased. So I'm gonna kind of moderate a little bit. So what I did with them is I had the group kind of go through each one of you. Kind of introduce yourselves. I'm gonna do it in alphabetical order, so Tom, you'll be first. So I'll have you kind of introduce yourself, talk a little bit about your background, and really talk about why you want to be on the school board. I know one of the big hot button issues this year is the renovations to the, the school, the middle school. So I know that's been on a lot of people's minds, so whether or not you want to talk about that afterwards, but we will have some time for questions and answers. And if you have any experience on the school board, I think that's really helpful for the folks to know whether or not you've been part of a school board and/or this school board, or you know what other committees maybe you've been on in the past, whether you've been on other town boards or committees and things of that, or you've, you know, what other volunteer work or other things you've done, that might be helpful to know too. So we'll start with Tom. So Tom, welcome.
Thank you.
You're first in, you're first in the hot seat.
Well, I hope I set the bar high. We'll see. My name is Tom Geller. I've lived in Pelham for about 15 years now. I moved here with my wife Denise and three kids who were in all in Pelham schools. They're now adults. The youngest is 21. I moved here from Brussels, Belgium. I'm originally from Massachusetts, but we lived in Brussels for a number of years, and I worked in an international school there. I have to say, I'm not an educator, but I'm familiar with a lot of education processes and, you know, running a school. We had small schools there for young children, and so I had some experience there. 2013, I ran for the Pelham School Board, and I have been a member of Pelham School Board for six years, the last two of which I was the chairman of the board. I stopped in 2019. I didn't run again. My oldest had just grad, was, had just graduated from the PHS. And I had other things going on, including family, you know, priorities and work priorities. I decided a few, well, a few months ago, I was thinking about running again, and I decided to do so because COVID times are very difficult. There's a lot of changes that are taking place, or now a lot of new things that are taking place. So I was thinking, if I run again, why would I run? Why would I want to run? There are personal reasons, which are getting connected with Pelham a little bit more, because during COVID times, it's very difficult. I thought it would be, I felt that I was withdrawing too much, and I wanted to find a way to get connected. For the town side and for the education side, I hoped that my previous experience would be helpful. I think this is a difficult time for the board because so many things are so new. We're dealing with a pandemic. We're dealing with many of the economic and many of the workplace issues, and especially the education issues for students. So yes, while the middle school project is a big project, and it is something that's going to be voted on next week and decided upon, I am in favor of it. I believe that education starts with the students and the teachers, but I believe the facilities, if they are substandard, they detract from that. You spend more time dealing with the issues around the facility and space and, you know, all the different types of adjustments you have to make, rather than having something that, that is, supports your, your educational endeavors. The, the primary thing is educating our students. But I feel that this is an issue that's going to be decided by voters, and however the voters decide will be, if I am elected, will be the issues, will be the priorities that I would have to deal with as a school board member. If they decide no, we have to work again. We have to do something to address the issues that are at Mel Memorial School. If we decide yes, we have to perform. We have to produce the thing that we're promising to the, to the town. It's one thing to get bonding passes, one thing to get the money. It's another thing actually to make sure that the facilities are upgraded in a way that's fairly close to what has been promised. Now, what has been promised is a conceptual idea, and the reason for that is saving architectural designs and everything else. You say, okay, we have a general idea what we're going to do. Now we have to produce. Now, I was part of the PHS project. That was the first year I came in. I was part of that. So I understand that there are questions that come up over time based on what they find when they do the renovations. So to me is, it's a responsibility to make sure that whichever way that the vote goes, it's important to be able to either come up with an alternative if it doesn't pass, or if it does pass, to make sure that it's done properly and as close as possible to what the original intent is, while remaining under budget. And my last reason, not my last, there, there are a few more, but, but basically, the important reason I feel is, what happens after the pandemic is, is over? How do we make sure that our budget is okay? How do we make sure that our students are being taught? And to me, in-person learning is very important. So, so those are some of the reasons that I'm in there. I'm open to any questions or anything like that anybody might have that I didn't address, but I figure I'll keep it to a reasonable amount of time. If you have anything more that you want to need to, I'm free to help you.
All right, great. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. What we'll do is, I think we'll hear from our other candidates, and then we will open it up for questions and conversation after we go around, if that's amenable to the group, if that works for everybody. All right. So, so thank you so much, Tom. Appreciate that. That was very, that's good. That's exactly what the type of stuff I think our group is looking for, really. A little bit about who you are and what you're thinking, why you're voting, why you're, keep throwing your name into the hat, and then, you know, how you foresee the future of the Pelham Schools. So next, I want to ask Meg, or is it Meg or Megan?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. And is it Larson?
Larson, yeah.
Okay. Welcome. And so thank you so much for coming and joining us today. Appreciate it. I so wanna turn, turn it over to you, and let's hear a little bit about, let's hear about you.
All right, great. So I am currently on the school board, so I am seeking reelection. I've lived in Pelham for 18 years with my husband and my son and my daughter. My son is a sophomore in college, and my daughter is a sophomore at Pelham High School. My husband and I have been very involved in the community in different volunteer capacities pretty much since the day we moved here, when my son was, was three. So we've been very involved in, in the community. I've had the pleasure of serving on the Pelham School Board for 11 years now, and the last two years I have been chair. It's been one of the hardest jobs I've ever done, but sometimes one of the most rewarding, you know, besides motherhood. This year has definitely been the most challenging, and, you know, there were times when I was like, God, do I want to continue to do this? But I do. I have a passion for this. I have a passion for education. During the last 11 years, I've been on so many committees. I've been on negotiations for the union contracts. I've been on hiring committees, and I've attended countless school board events. My first seven years on the school board, I was the budget committee rep to the school board, so I attended every budget committee meeting for the first seven years I was on the school board. During that time, I worked really hard with the administration and the board to increase transparency and to bring a more positive light between the town and the budget committee, the school, and the voters. For a long time, people just thought, you know, the school was trying to, you know, hide expenses or, you know, pull something over, and we really wanted to build that trust, and I think that the last several years at the polls, we, we have been successful, and I think because we have built that trust and we've been transparent. You know, we've had a lot of changes in the last few years, a lot of turnover with administration, and I finally feel like we're, we're stabilizing. We have our new superintendent this year, Dr. McGee, and I've been very excited about the conversations we've had about, you know, curriculum and even the building, the memorial school building, and, you know, retaining and keeping quality staff and making improvements to the education in Pelham. And I want to continue to work with him. I think that we have a lot more work to do once this pandemic is over. A lot of our year has been managing the pandemic, managing academics, the social and emotional needs. We've been, we've been in school with kids having the option to be remote. We did have a period of remote learning when the surge was happening around the holidays. We've been back in school since mid-January, and we've been working hard. Everyone in the schools, the school board, we've been working hard to keep these kids in school, which is what is best for them. You know, the memorial school is a big, big topic this year. You know, it's a lot of money for, for renovation and addition, but it is needed. I mean, that building is the oldest building. It's in our, in our district, and there's been little, little improvements. I wish that it wasn't a pandemic year, because normally we would have more and more tours of that building, so people could get a real, real view of what it, what it's like. I'm sure many people here have had kids that have gone through that building, and not much has changed since that time. But like Tom said, you know, the building does detract from the learning, so, and I just feel like our, our town and our kids deserve better. So I am supporting it. And either way, you know, whether it's a yes vote or a no vote, there's going to be something to deal with around the memorial school. I was on the board when the high school failed by 60 votes, and we had to go back to the drawing, drawing board and come back with a plan that would, that would pass the voters. And then I was part of it when we had to make some of those decisions when we were doing the building, you know, whether we want to spend money here, whether we want to spend money there. So I do have experience, you know, with, with those projects. You know, it's been a very unstable year. I have a wealth of knowledge from being on the board, and we've been through four superintendents, numerous principals, so many teachers. I just, I really, I really, I've loved being on the board, and I'm not ready to, to quite give it up. I just, I love Pelham. I love giving back to the community, and I just want to stay, stay involved.
That's awesome. I, yeah, I mean, this has definitely been probably, and I agree, and I'm not in education, but I have, I have two, two children that are both college and post-grad school age, and this, this last couple of years has been, year and a half has been trying for those kids. I can't imagine if they were in school, you know, before, for both families and the student, very, very challenging. So the work that you guys do on the school boards is extremely overwhelming, so I can only imagine how hard it's been.
And I've been, I've been working at home full-time since last March. I'm a tax accountant, and I work in public accounting. And, you know, my daughter was home for a period of remote learning, and it was tough, well, you know, keeping her motivated and keeping her focused on, on school. It's, it's not easy, so it's been hard on parents. It's been hard on families, you know, having to make those choices, whether you can go to work or you have to stay home with your kids. It's just, it's been hard on everyone. There's no right decision for, for everyone.
Yeah. So I, I give the three, the three of you, well, you're, you're going back. You're like throwing yourself back into the fire. And Tom, so far, you know, you, you want to get into this fire, like, like crazy. It's crazy. And Michelle, okay, so we're gonna have to hear why Michelle wants to be on the board. Why do you want to be in the fire, Michelle? This is Michelle Par, is it Parsons?
Parsons, correct.
Well, wel, welcome to you, Michelle. So, so tell us about you, and why, why do you want to be in, in this fire group?
So that's kind of exactly why I started to run. So this is my first venture into public candidacy. So school has been a big place in my life, especially through this pandemic. So just to give you a little background, I've lived in Pelham for 17 years. I am married and have two daughters. They attend the Pelham Elementary School. Education for me has been a focus in my life. I have an undergraduate and a master's degree in business. I also am a working mom, like Megan and Tom. I work at a software company, so I manage financial systems. I've been working from home also for the past year, and then participating with my kids, which has been different. So in the past, I volunteered for our top soccer teams when my kids were younger, and they've grown through our different soccer programs that we have in town. So I've spent a lot of time that's really evolved through the pandemic, I might add. So for me, I am a huge proponent of learning and feel that we need to focus on empowering our children in all areas. So school is that foundation. They learn academic fundamentals. They learn about sports. They learn about arts. So in speaking to the Pelham Memorial School addition and renovation, I will be voting yes for it. I did take the opportunity, when this came up last year, to go walk through the school, and I was pretty surprised by the physical building. Originally, I am from Buffalo, New York, so lots of snow, as we have here in New Hampshire. And so I was very surprised when I learned that it was a lovely middle schooler who was bringing me through the, the building. Just, you have to literally leave the building in the winter in order to go someplace else, which I was very surprised in our environment that that is the case. I also really believe in listening to people in the community, so I've talked to a lot of people who went to school, who grew up here. And, you know, you'll hear people two, 20, 30 years ago say, well, the school needed to be upgraded 20 years ago, you know? So for me, it's time I physically saw the building. There's opportunities, you know, to get all areas, sports, getting a gym of regulation size, you know, different spaces for the, for our students to be able to do different offerings beyond just the academics. Obviously, the building will provide spaces to do that. So through experience and actually looking at the building, that was why I actually got my vote to do the renovation last year, and I'll be voting yes next week. And really, I want to run for school board to be a voice for our parents. So many of us are struggling through this pandemic, and I look for the best learning and social outcomes for all of our children. I really like hearing the voices of parents, the community, the administration, teachers, and the students. And I want to be recognized as one of those school board members that listens to people, lets them express their opinions, and then we can all work through these stresses together. So that's really what I'm looking to do in running, is to hear everybody's thoughts and opinions, and how the school board can communicate back out, you know, what decisions are being made based upon all of the group's voices.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Michelle. Yeah, and I think that's a, it's a really important thing to echo when, you know, especially because, you know, people will often say, well, specifically, my husband, this morning, I was having a conversation with him this morning, and I said, oh, I have a Zoom meeting, and the candidates that are running for the school board are gonna be working with, sorry about that, are gonna be running with, or meeting with my senior group, and she, he said to me, he's like, well, what, why, why is that? Why the senior is interested in the school board? And I'm like, oh, that was, you have a wife as a senior center director. I can't believe you're actually saying that. I'm like, because they're community members, and they, they need to be heard, and their, their concerns. They have children that either went through the system, or they have grandchildren, or even if they don't, they're paying for those, those renovations, those schools, those teachers, those students. And so I think it's so important to keep our entire community involved and educated when it comes to what's happening in our community. And so listening is a huge thing that I'm so excited that you said that, because I think it's so important to listen to all of the compute, community, not just the parents, but like the entire community about what's going on. So I want to, again, thank you guys for coming. Do any of our members that are here have questions? Connie, I see you raised your hand. Did you want to, if you take yourself off mute, you can certainly ask your question.
Thank you. I'm certainly in support, as I have been other, last year as well, for the renovation, for the remodeling and renovations. Yesterday, I got in the mail this brochure.
I got that too.
I want to ask you folks about, it's from the Friends of Pelham, yes. And there were three sections to that. One was that, in quotes, "We respect, we respectfully request a $10 million option for the Pelham School." Would you speak to that? Secondly, the homeschooling, how did they, or you two, I'm sure, have explored the question of homeschooling, but they believe that should be, that some of the parents would continue to have their children homeschooled. I'm sure you've discussed, you'd be willing to discuss that as well. And finally, they're talking about that there have been two school projects in the last five years, and I don't recall that that has been the case. So please pick up on any one of those or all of those items, please.
All right. So I see Meg raised her hand first, and then Tom. So why don't, Meg, why don't you respond first?
Sure. So, yeah, that flyer was very discouraging yesterday. Friends of Pelham, nobody knows who that is. So it's just some anonymous person who decided that they were gonna spend the money that probably would have went to the tax increase on those flyers and mowing them out. And they're just putting out misinformation. So first, there is no $10 million option. I don't know what you could get for $10 million for that building. So that is, that's not even on the table. That was never discussed. So that's the first thing. As far as homeschooling, homeschooling and remote schooling are two totally different things. So right now, parents have the options, about 25% of our kids that are doing remote school, which means the teachers are at home, and they are teaching like this over Zoom to kids that are at home. And so that was only an option for the pandemic year. That is not going to be an option. That is not something we're discussing moving forward at this point. In that same token, we have not seen a big decline in the number of kids that are attending Pelham Schools, whether remote or in-person, to opt into do homeschool, which means the curriculum is, is then delivered by parents and not by educators of Pelham. So it's two totally different things. So, you know, it's just, it's very, very, it's very discouraging that someone could just print those flyers from every house and not, not put, not, and no one had the opportunity to say, well, can you explain your position? Can you explain, you know, why, why this is?
Thank you.
And what was your last question, Connie?
It, it had to do with the two school projects in the last five years.
I think they were talking about the high school opened about five years ago. So, you know, we are still paying the high school bond, but there is one point that next year, the municipal complex, that bond will be paid off in 2022. So, you know, we will see a decrease. And I have to say that the school, our business administrator, Deb Mahoney, who was the 2021 New Hampshire Business Association, who was Business Administrator of the Year, she's fabulous, but she works very closely with the town and Hal to set our tax rate. And we've done a very good job over the last few years to kind of stagger our projects, so that we, we try not to have too many contracts on the ballot at one time, or too many projects in order, in order to stabilize the tax rate, because that's how you're gonna get support. We can't just keep raising taxes astronomically every year. We're not gonna get the support for our budget or our project.
Did Tom, did Tom, you want to respond?
Yeah, I'm not gonna repeat everything she said, but a couple of things. One, as far as I understand, there has never been a request of the board or even in deliberative session by anybody regarding a $10 million option. I don't know what a $10 million option is, and it certainly would not address many of the issues that have been outlined. Could there be something that's done for a $10 million? Sure. Would it achieve what we're looking to achieve in, in this one? No, it would not. There's absolutely no way it would become a middle school. There is no way we would expand the spaces that are necessary to expand. We would not be able to do STEAM. As regards the homeschooling, I didn't know that much detail, so I'm, I'll defer to Megan as to what's going on. My concern is, what will the numbers look like in the future? Are we building to that? Are we, we're not building a Taj Mahal, as they like to say. But are we addressing the issues and the needs of the students in the coming years? And as regards projects, I was part of the high school project. That was 22.6 million. This one is 33. So for one, it's not $60 million that they're looking for. And for two, as difficult as it is during a COVID time, this is, the bond rates are the lowest ever. If we wait another year, now, this is something I looked up. The project that was proposed last year, had that exact same project been proposed this year, I understand it would be a 7% increase in costs. What they did do, I believe, and if Megan wants to correct my numbers if I'm wrong, is they trimmed some of that, so it would be 3.9% increase as opposed to 7% increase. So that is 33 right now, but if you were to propose this one again, it would be another 7% increase or two, two million more. So what happens is, at some level, you cannot reduce the amount without losing what you're trying to achieve, which is trying to achieve STEAM, trying to get the spacing, trying to get the facilities correct. So it's a large amount, but the question is, is it addressing our needs? And is this the time to do it? Regardless, you know, is it time now? Can one wait five years? If you wait five years, the rates go up, the costs go up. And my last thing is, the project, the high school project was seven years ago at the same stage as we are today. In other words, 2014, that's when it came up for, for election, and 2015, thereabouts, I believe, that's when, 15 or 16 is when we actually opened the, the building. So it's not five years we have that. It is seven years, a small difference. It's 55 million versus 60 million. These are just, I know these sound like details, but to me, it's important to get the information correct. And that's, you asked a question about the flyer. These are some of the answers about the flyer that are taken into consideration. These are the correct numbers and, and the correct issues.
Thank you very much.
I also think, I think, Michelle, you wanted to comment as well?
Yeah. So one other note in regard to that homeschool, a community member on another Zoom call that I had done was asking about, the state was looking to put forward a bill for taxpayers to pay for homeschooling as well as private school. So the question was, you know, what was my thoughts on whether the town of Pelham would be, would I be willing to pay taxes for homeschooling? And so my response to that is, no, I want the tax money that I put into this town to go into our public school system. So there is an offering out there. There are some families who are electing the homeschooling as an option. So the state of New Hampshire is looking at this as a potential option as a whole. My take on it is that's still gonna be a tax increase if people go to that homeschooling, and I want our money to stay local in our community.
Great. Meg, did you want to?
I mean, there's always been kids that have been homeschooled, and what, what all I'm saying says, there hasn't been an increase due to the pandemic. They just chose the remote option, and so far, all the, all the indications are, they'll be returning to school. But every year, there are a few families that just decide that's what's best for them in general. And after the bond, the current rates are 1.58%, and we estimated in our projections at 2.5. So if this passes next week, we will most likely secure a bond at less than 2.5%, which was our projection, because the rates are still remaining low, which I think is huge. I mean, we're not gonna see, these bond rates are the lowest they've been in maybe, you know, over 20 years. So you know, I think that we need to take advantage of that.
Yeah, that, and we discussed that in our last Zoom meeting, the fact that these bond rates are really historically low. And so when it comes to doing major projects for the town, this is really ideal time to get that, those, borrow those funds, because you're not gonna see those interest rates any less, I don't think, for many years. So I think that it is a smart move. Does anyone else have questions for our, John? If you wanna take yourself off mute?
Yep.
Hi, John.
Hi. A couple of questions. One, are there any candidates running besides these three?
Nope.
No. Okay. Okay. Second of all, I saw something from the, from the town on what was being covered in the education portion of the ballot. And what I saw, the outline of the addition struck me as rather strange. I didn't see things about classrooms in there. I saw a couple of spaces with strange definitions on them. Could you expand upon that, please?
Do you, do you know what it was that you saw from the town? Was it?
It supposedly had to do with what the several questions were, including question two, which is the $33 million for this, for this new redoing of the middle school.
So I may, I hate to put Meg on the spot, but the active board member, do you, are there a classroom? Could you talk a little bit about the renovations?
Yep. And so there are, there are, so it will renovate the entire space that's currently there. And it will add on like a gym area, cafeteria area, a small stage that is in the gym area, new locker rooms, because if you've ever been in the locker rooms in the memorial school, they're in the basement. And they're, they're in dire need of repair. There are additional classrooms being added on, so if you're looking at the building on the left-hand side on the brick near the cemetery, there are some additions there. And I think what you saw was, they kind of named some of the classrooms. So you might have saw like, basically on the outside would be science labs, and then what you would call like a collab room, which is like a small breakout area where like special ed kids could have services. Or if kids are doing a group project, they can move in there. They're just smaller educational spaces. So there are additional classrooms added, but the rest of the classrooms are also, I mean, it would be totally gutted, kind of like the high school did. I don't know if you guys ever, I mean, obviously, I'm sure you walked through the old high school and the new one, and when you walked in, you couldn't believe that the old building was the old building. It was absolutely just gutted and redone. So there are, there are additions. And you know, and again, like Tom said, this is conceptual, so they are gonna be used as, as educational spaces. But we're not gonna say, okay, this one's definitely gonna be a classroom, this one's definitely gonna be a special ed classroom. But they were just trying to give an idea of what these classrooms would be, like science labs, because science labs need to be a little bit bigger, so that you can have this lab table and have the lab space to do, to do, you know, experiments and labs and whatnot.
So is there further architectural work to be done?
Yeah, but not, yeah. So it would have cost, God, I think Wyndham had put like millions of dollars on their ballot just for architectural. And then if that project fails, you have to go back to the drawing space. We've worked with these architects before, and the building, the construction managers were down on the high school, and our project managers, they did the fire station and the high school. So we have a lot of experience with these guys. And you know, they, they know their stuff. And they're, they're, they're holding true, and we have a lot of confidence in them. But you know, the rest of the project, like the subcontractors and all that, all go out to bid. So you know, local New Hampshire contractors have the opportunity to bid on these projects and work on this project. So we really wanna keep, you know, the jobs here local in New Hampshire.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from any of our group? So I, I mean, I, I'm gonna chime in. I, again, I don't live here in town, but I do appreciate the need for proper space. I know our senior center about two years ago underwent some renovations in our office space. And you know, when you're trying to work in a space, whether it be you're an employee or a student, I can't imagine when you're working in a space that is just not conducive, what it's, there's, you know, whether it's too small or not broken up correctly, you don't have the right equipment. It makes doing your job, makes learning very difficult. So I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed for the school project. We've had Chip McGee on our Zoom program several times since he was hired. And he's really done a great job educating us here about some of the needs of the, the school system here in town. And I appreciate that in his effort to come and reach out to our, our senior community here. So that's wonderful. One last question before we're ending. We've got about 20 minutes left, but we can, what do you think? And I want to ask each one of you, I'm gonna start with Michelle. I wanna ask each one of you, what do you think the biggest challenge is going to be? Obviously, renovations aside, I'm talking education-wise, for kids coming back after this COVID crisis ends. So say, starting up in the, in the fall, what do you foresee as some of the bigger challenges the school system faces?
Yeah, so really, the social side of this is gonna be the biggest challenge that we have in front of us. And it's here and now. So what is the impact on all of us as a community? Right now, we're all working together and talking to each other via Zoom. So all of our kids and teachers and staff are gonna have to get back together in person and learn how to work together and how to learn from each other and how to build those social skills together. I definitely have seen some regression with my children, and I think that's spread across many of the students, whether they're participating in remote or whether they are actually physically in the school right now. This social interaction, no matter if you're participating in either opportunity to learn, we have to get our community back together and working together in person. And how do we do that? How do we guide our students? How do we give our staff the counseling that's needed? Who can help provide that advice for us? We're all gonna come back together as a community and, you know, after this pandemic. And we need to start doing this now. How can we build those connections and those social interactions now? Instead of waiting for, you know, the end-all impact and now we open up completely. What can we do? So that's really the area that we need to start focusing. And for me, it's the here and now. We need to start addressing the social side.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's very important, you know, as, you know, we hear, you hear a lot in the news about the kids and how this is socially impacting them. I can relate to that, because our seniors have been incredibly isolated during this whole pandemic. I've heard from a few seniors, and it was an interesting comment I had. One of my seniors said to me, we, we have been having some small group programs up to 10, as many as 15 at one time, we just felt the okay to, to bump up our, our group size. But one of the things she said to me was that she has to relearn how to be social in person again. And it's like you forget some of that, and she says, it's only been a year. How is this happening? I've been social my whole life. And I'm like, yeah, but it's, it's very true. And it's even that physical connection, right? So you, you're so hesitant. I'm, I was always a huggy person, so anybody who knows me here at the center knows that I, I'm a hugger, I'm a toucher. And, and I'm, you know, we always were always, you know, connecting, you know, here at the center. And so that's been such a change for us here. So how do you do that safely? How do you like do like a fist bump or shake someone's hand again? And so, yeah, I mean, I can imagine for kids, that's just really gonna be a challenge to get those social conversations, getting those social groups together. Definitely a challenge. Interesting. Thank you, Michelle, for bringing that up. How about you, Tom? Do you wanna chime in on that? Like, what do you, what are your thoughts in regards to some of those challenges? Or what do you think a, a big challenge for the system, the school system will be come September?
Before I decided to run, I asked myself, what is the bigger issue? What is the bigger purpose that I would wanna run? When you're on the school board, when you're going through the meetings, oftentimes, it's the day-to-day operations that take a lot of your time. So you're focused on, okay, I need to write a policy, or I need to approve a policy, read it and understand it. We have to approve budgets, we have to approve various other things and just interact. So my thought in the background was, how can I help improve Pelham education? And that means quality education for students. That's first top priority is where you go there. The practical sides, what are the challenges? I mean, I think COVID is with us for a long time. The pandemic may not be, but COVID protocols, COVID behavior is going to influence a bit of what we're doing with our children, who will not be vaccinated. The youngest ones don't, they're not in the vaccine program. There is, as much as we're vaccinated, I got my first shot the other day. There still is concern that this can, this can be something. So it is gonna change some of the, the character of, of education and how we do things. To me, the challenge, the immediate challenge post-pandemic, let's say we open up in September, which I'm, I wanna open as soon as, I think the social side is very important, is reestablishing a welcoming climate and a welcome educational experience. This is gonna be challenging, because COVID has caused a certain amount of turnover and in, in this, in the teachers, and made it difficult to be able to, everybody is sort of recruiting teachers now, you know, in that stage. You can't get a substitute, you have troubles, you have things like that. So you really have to start with the top, and you really have to say what, we are going to come back with a welcoming climate that recognizes the social aspect as well as the educational aspect. Make this a truly welcoming experience for our students. It's one thing to say, it's another thing to do, and that comes from the top, comes from the school board, working with the administration, and the administration working with the, with the individual schools and individual teachers to do it. So that is, to me, the challenge that's gonna be there, is how do we bring back 1,700 students into the system in a positive way? And really addresses the shortcomings of this year, you know, the difficulties of educating, you know, whether we've fallen behind quote, compared to our standards, how we do that without overwhelming them, without demanding too much at that time. Because this will be a change for them as well. Having gone for a year without the social interaction and going into social interaction, there's gonna be a very important thing to focus on.
Quick question, quick question. Do, would you think, or will the school, does anyone know, any three of you, do you know if they'll be doing some kind of like baseline testing? How do they, how is that gonna take place? Like, are they gonna do some kind of? Because I've heard in the news, you know, kids have lost so much, you know, they haven't had the same, that same experience. So is there some discussion?
Yeah, that's what we need to start talking about. Where are we at? We, we don't know right now how far or where we're at. Are we on the same playing field as last year educationally? Or are we lower? We haven't done those, that, that data point's not there right now for our students. So we need to get it.
Right, yeah, because that's what I'm thinking. I'm wondering, how do we get our kids kind of from where they leave off, say, this June? And then coming back into that one socially different, like, structure, coming back into that again? And then, you know, trying to create it welcoming and not stress these kids out, but then also try to figure out, okay, where are they? And, and how do we move forward? So I think that's, that's gonna be, definitely gonna be a challenge. And to do it in a way that's non-threatening for both the teachers, the administration, and the kids, so that they kind of feel that. So that's, it's a lot, it's a lot that the school board is gonna be working, I'm sure, on getting those kind of procedures. I, I, I don't really know, and I apologize, because I don't know 100% what a school board does, but I'm assuming you guys really provide that direction and support and guidance when it comes to building those types of curriculums and things for the school administration? Yes, no?
That's really the superintendent's job, is to kind of put that together. And then they write the policies and the procedures, and then the school board reviews those. So those are the foundation of your edu- educational system, right? And how things work. And it's the school board that agrees to those policies and procedures that are then implemented.
The school board is responsible for three things. They have one employee, which is the superintendent. They're responsible for the policy. The administration writes it based on best practices and things that they look and they bring it to us for review, but we certainly have the options to be able to add or detract as, as we see fit. And the last one is budget.
So it kind of acts almost like a board of selectmen does to the town, with the town administrator being the superintendent of the school, kind of so to speak. And then they kind of work, like, so we always say, the town administrator works kind of for the board and brings all that stuff, and the board approves it, kind of make sure that things get implemented, oversees the budget kind of thing, and then.
Now, part of the superintendent, like running, you know, the superintendent working for us is, we have reviews and we have goal setting.
Okay.
So if we're talking about, for example, addressing climate, or addressing retention, or addressing certain curriculum issues, it would be something that's written into the, the annual goal setting, superintendent, and evaluating the superintendent based on how he or she is, is performing in those, you know, it's a discussion, it's a, it's a two-way discussion as to what, what the objectives are. But that's how we look at, if I were on board, that's how we would be looking at, at how well a superintendent is performing and how well the district is, is addressing its, its goals.
Gotcha.
Now, the one thing is, we have a logo, which is inspiring, you know, students one mind at a time. I, I might have paraphrased a little bit that, but I think it's a little bit difficult. I mean, I think there should be some sort of measuring as to how students are doing, but I think a lot of it is actually getting in there and actually seeing students as they're in the school, where, where they are and how best to help them progress. I think it would be a mistake to say, well, you should be, you know, you missed a year, but you should be at grade six level of this, this, this. Yet for no, you know, it's very difficult to do remote learning. There will be, there will be huge variances between how successful each family is with their students. And I think accommodating and finding ways to support the student based on their particular level at the time is an important factor, as opposed to standardized testing. Other than standardized testing gives you an idea where you should head, but it shouldn't be an evaluation for a student who hasn't really had the opportunity to go to school for the year.
Does that make sense? Yeah, good point.
And there are students that are, that are thriving in this environment. So there are students that are excelling, that are going, that are, that are not behind, but they're ahead. And it does, it depends on, on their self-motivation, their support system at home. And there's, there's a lot of different factors. You know, we each come from different backgrounds and different families. And some families are thriving and some families are really struggling. So the kids and the families are all gonna need different kinds of supports. You know, honestly, like, we did have a period of remote learning, but we've been very fortunate that our kids have been in school. There's been a lot of modifications, you know, to get the six feet apart and wearing masks. But I know for my high school daughter, for example, she was like, I don't care if I have to wear five masks. I just wanna be in school and see people. You know, she eats lunch in her classroom. You know, there's not much, it's not the same, it's not the same, but she is happy to be there and she is learning. You know, being at home was, was a struggle, and it's, it's, it's an adjustment. But you know, the, the longer we can keep these kids in school, and hopefully with the COVID numbers coming down, that we're done with remote learning for the year. That is, that is my hope. That we're gonna start to make progress, and when we come back and hopefully, I don't know if it'll be a full normal, but you know, what next year will look like, we are gonna have to assess all kids and where they're at. And you know, our goals of our school really are for individualized learning. So not every kid, no matter what school, pandemic or not, are at the same level. And we have to, we have to tailor and meet all those kids' needs, even in non-pandemic years.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you guys do a really good job, a really tough job, our school board does. Yeah, I think you guys do a really good job, a really tough job, uh, school board does. Uh, this, this year has just been, um, extremely trying. And, um, I give you guys a ton of credit for stepping up. And wanting to continue, either continue your work, go back to your work, start the work. I think it's fabulous and kudos to you guys because I think it's, it's incredibly challenging. Uh, I want to thank all of you, um, as we're getting close to our, our, our two o'clock timeframe. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for joining us, all three of you for coming and taking the time today. Um, to share some insights with us, to also, um, offer some information about yourselves. Very important for our voters. And, um, again, we will be, um, putting this up on our YouTube channel. So that if, um, you want to tell friends and family to check it out. Uh, welcome anybody to come and check out our YouTube channel. It's on, uh, senior programs at the Hobbs Community Center. So, uh, certainly they can check out our, our YouTube programs, but thank you again. Um, before I close up, does anybody, before I close up for good, does anybody have any final questions or any final thoughts? From the candidates, anything that anybody wants to add before I finish our recording? Think we're good?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Any of your friends, um, have any questions about that flyer they received yesterday over Memorial School Project? They can feel free to call Dr. McGee and he will answer their questions. And I only say him because I can get, you know, I can give out his phone number. I can't give out, you know, other board members' private cell phone numbers or anything like that, but. You know, if there's questions and, and people you know that are on the fence. You know, please encourage them to reach out and, and get the, the actual facts. I just, it's disappointing that, you know, somebody decided to, like I said before, hide behind a flyer and. And could possibly hurt our kids in our community. So.
Yeah, it's really, it's, it is sad to see that, that misinformation being sent out like that. Um, when it, you know, it's clear, clearly not, um, accurate. Michelle, did you want to?
And, and one other note, one thing it called out, um, if you guys hear of anyone in the community looking or anyone that you know, looking for a job. The school system is hiring, so please share that. Um, we need people in all different areas. So if there's anyone that you know, please take a look at the job postings on the Pelham School site. Share that information. The more people we can get that out to and get some candidates in. Um, it really supports our schools because we need staff in all different areas. So if you know, can think of anybody, please share that information out. There are job opportunities in our school system.
Very good. Thank you. John, did you want to say anything?
No, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
And so again, thank you so much. Um, I'm going to stop our recording. Um, let me just stop this.